Welcome, everybody. This is the technical board directors work session for Tuesday, September thirteenth. And to see who's all here. Director Chan Bojack plugging in her iPhone. And we have Director Morris, who's doing it virtually. And Monday Larson. And we'll probably have Director Huber joining us in the middle of the meeting. She's going to be a little late. So welcome, everybody who's joined us and this work session is to look at our schedule. Is to look at our schedule for the work sessions. A coming work session for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And either you might say something about it or sure.
So what I tried to do is take a look at it. There are a couple of challenges I had with putting this together. One was looking at the calendar year, what we have, and then working on the board. But there's a spreadsheet that we had for various topics. So one of the challenges I had was my access to the Google spreadsheet was not updated. So when I initially put this in, I only had about half of the items. Then I checked with Ms. Cord, and she's like, oh, there's been some additions. I was like, okay. So there are a lot of subjects. And so I tried to group them. Because, for instance, if we look at April, like the alignment design of instruction, that was a topic and then was its own topic, science was its own topic, CTE, fiscal wellbeing. So each of those were different, but they all kind of fall into instruction. So the thought was to kind of put these at least in kind of times of the year. And then the other is on the left, we have the high expectations equity and the relationships and engaged partners. Those are the kind of the categories we have for strategic plans. So it's trying to put these in those particular areas that we emphasize that so that when we have a work session. Or if these are falling into presentations or whatever they may, they may be, we can reference that part of the strategic plan once we get all of that kind of done and approved, hopefully by the end of this one. So this was my initial thought at doing that. I also included the data reports, which is a separate document. And many of these would be ones also that so I talked to the cabinet a little bit about this. This was the, the report that we had. It's dated twenty seventeen because that was the last time we had this kind of updated. The idea behind this would be to identify the reports that are compliance, the ones that we have to do for the state. So we have to do those anyway. Where do we fit those? The others would be data that we feel gives us information most about the progress we're making in achieving the strategic goals that we have outside. So the once we have a look, once we get through this particular calendar piece, then I'll line up the data reports for each of those that would identify the topics for that particular month, or as they're associated with the particular work in that month, wherever they can be. So we'll cross-reference that. We'll still keep, I think, a list of the data reports as its own document, obviously updated because it's important for that to kind of be there. But I think it'll be good to cross-reference it with the other either work sessions or presentations or reports that we have that would be coming up. There's a lot, there's a lot of, obviously, lots of information on there. So again, this is a an attempt to look at when I think we would have information and data ready throughout the years, but we talked about that before. You know, we talked about it in Cameron today. Like if you say, hey, we're going to do this in March, but then we don't have the data and that gets pushed off, then they all start stacking up. And then we have a bunch of things that we're trying to get, or we push those off and we say, you know, hey, that one's a little dated now. Why don't we hit this again next year? The idea, I think, you know, the, the attempt with this is to let everybody know when we're going to be talking about these subjects so that there's plenty of time to be read for these to come up.
So starting with the, I guess, the data reports. So there's a few obvious updates on there, like the twenty-one's now we've formative assessments. It's just, yeah, I really. And the achievement index, that's a state one that was kind of they discontinued. And I haven't seen, you know, because of COVID and then because it involved a lot of like the state test scores. When, I think they will start that up again, but I'm not sure when. So and whether they will restructure or whatever, but I guess the other, just overall comment was so the way we've been getting data reports is kind of, you know, here's a data bunch of numbers. And what I'm always looking for is, you know, so what's the impact of this and what's the analysis from, and particularly from teaching and learning on it? So, you know, we have the data analysis group and teaching and learning group and for me, it would be better if we could kind of you know, present the data and then also say, okay, teaching and learning, you look at it, what, you know, what is your, what is your take on it, you know, in terms of, you know, here's some areas that, that we stood out to us, we need to work on that, you know, that kind of thing. And I think that was, because otherwise, some of it, I mean, it depends on, some of these are going to require more analysis than others. But it's, it seems like it would be really, because it seems so often we just get kind of the data dumped on it and without really that more in-depth analysis. I know, I mean, sometimes, you know, we ask, okay, what's the impact? And the schools are looking at it, okay, but then in the school, SIP reports, we never really get evidence, right? They'd say, okay. And so, I mean, there's two different levels. There's the, from the district level, you know, here's what we see kind of at the high level, and then that goes down to the building level. And so it would be nice to have the, you know, the evidence that the data has actually had an impact and have it, you know, at the district level, TNL looking at it, and then and then at the schools, you know, and they present, so yeah, well, here's, here's some data that we looked at. Here's what the impact was and so forth. So that's just kind of a, a general comment to that.
Adding one, I would, and this is a place where anecdotal information can come in, you know, teachers could come in and talk, students could come in and talk about what those numbers mean to them, or why they think those numbers are happening when they are. Some of us remember when the students were brought in to the last strategic planning thing session. But they were all the leader students. And so we were losing the whole voice there of what what it means. So it's, it's great for teaching and learning to gather all that information and bring it to us, but it's also good to have that allow that share and from those audiences to come in. So I hope we can do that. Just yeah. That is my opinion. You know, if I may, it's things some shooting on my sense and understanding the purpose of data. It is not a gotcha. It was what what is our next step? Yeah. How can this influence what we need to do differently or keep the same? And so it's going to be ownership because in some spaces, as I continue on, it was learn towards it is, it feels like a gotcha and it has not. And we might have to just set those voices aside and bring in the other voices who can look at it differently. And letting them know voices within these voices and see if some of them, those could kind of flow over too.
And the other part of that too is that, you know, if we look at Spickler on the deck, third grade meeting or something. If there is issues, it's not, you know, completely on the third grade teachers. It's, you know, pre-K, one, two, it's the whole system we're looking at, you know, particularly at this level. And so, yeah, that I agree with. It's a mind shift for, for some people, but that's where we need to go because that's still, you can other, if, if people are all just reacting defensively to data, then, you know, it just breaks down and you can't move. So I agree with you.
And I hope too that as we, you know, I think there are ways that we can model that, right? From here and books out there, you know, and even how the data is presented to us, as Eric Larson was speaking to, I think that will also help to start shift how staff feel about how we perceive data to, right? So I think it's, it's too bold, it's kind of approaching it, shifting how we, how we talk about it potentially. And then, and then, yeah, shifting mindset, really, really shifting more towards a good work mindset. Like if you said, data just is an opportunity, right, to move and grow and shift and, yeah.
And the other part of it, you know, when they're, you know, if data reveals there's something going on in a certain area, sometimes they actually maybe put more research into it. You know, which is, I mean, we need to understand that, you know, if we're looking at budgets and, I mean, it's not always that, but sometimes it is. And so we need to understand that aspect of it, you know, more professional elements of, you know, smaller classes, you know, whatever it is that after the, but that analysis, that's always what I'm hungry for is head analysis of that deep analysis of, you know, what's, what's going on? How do we improve academic achievement for students?
And that also involves some partnerships we have or don't.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly. All the, all the supporting organizations, you know, and sometimes the supporting organizations can offer good insights into, you know, based on what they interacted with their students, is what they see, you know, that could be an important input into the process as well.
And, and I hope when they look at this data that we remember to look at growth, not just numbers, by growth.
Yeah, and growth, growth is can be registered in numbers as well. I mean, it can be a couple of different things. The other thing I wanted to just bring up in this, along this same line is I think, I don't, I think this would be really helpful, I think somewhere around the work session discussion about assessments and how we're using them. And so, how we're using it, so there's a lot of you know, concerns. So a lot of times we get or I read and I approve the already approval. And so a lot of times that can be, we had like a too long vote on that. And so you know, I, you know, personally, no. Assessments is, it's tricky because, you know, that it's part of there's a couple of aspects. The one is, you know, we don't want to be, you know, every time, the amount of time we spend assessing, that takes away instructional time. I mean, we've had, so we want to kind of try and, in my view, minimize, you know, the, particularly the, maybe required to the state standardization stuff. But see if we can, when we're looking, for example, we have the assessment calendar on a thing and there's, it seems to me that there's some overlapping. So there's some things that could be done, maybe reduce some of the assessment we're doing so that that gives a bit more time back to for instructional time, which is a good thing. And, but also you know, what's yeah, it's, it's interesting. Chris, Chris Rayco, who did the construction, has started kind of a conversation about, you know, he's kind of taking some shots at the, at that, at the, you know, his path, the right assessment for the state. And, you know, he doesn't, he's not saying, don't do it. That's not what he's saying at all. I listened to him very carefully talk about it. But what he, and at the same time, he's taking that side, but he's not really offering an alternative to it, which is blowing my mind a little bit. But anyway, and, and we need to decide, you know, our best back is have already, you know, and we need to, I think it's, it would really be useful to hear from you. And then I think I'm pretty sure you have ideas on this. Is, you know, how we should approach assessments, the whole package of assessments in this district and, you know, how we would use RIAI ready, you know, to help instruction. And the, the previous CEO talked a lot about, you know, formative assessments as used by, I think, Rick Higgins, this is more that he was looking at, you know, classroom, really more classroom focused assessments. I mean, it would really be helpful to me to have, you know, a whole discussion of that and just kind of have your view on how, how we should be using assessments in this district and, you know, we should be already, do we need something else? Do, you know, whatever the situation is.
So this is a nugget.
Yeah.
Irony is standard space. It's not about the standard space. And if we understood how to read and use our data, when we take the irony assessment, it is an indicator of what we need to do and how well we will do. It really is. But we have to also believe it and use the information to guide our practices, professional development, look at student work, evidence, and just be the laser codes and we'll get there sooner than later.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, in the past, there's a lot of concerns about assessments and whether they're costing hard on the students and, you know, that kind of thing. So I just think it's, it's worth having, you know, somewhere on the schedule here that, you know, I fear that a lot of times they're kind of put that together in a, in a package of things that what, what the, what the approach to assessment is and, you know, what maybe what we're not doing quite right and we should change a little bit or whatever. But it's, it's becoming a pretty big, a pretty big issue and how we, I think it would be helpful to have, have one use that whole, that whole area.
I think one of the, to kind of compliment that, I was actually in a conversation about this today. You know, the assessments are different side posts along the way throughout the year. Depending on which ones you use in different grade levels, you know, different levels, you might be using different ones even beyond just I ready and S back, you know, secondary level. I remember being a high school teacher, I'd give quizzes or tests that were not related to, you know, state assessment. So I think in conjunction with the assessment is how we think about classroom base grading, whatever we had, we may have that because there's a lot of grading practices as well that I think don't necessarily accurately reflect the progress that our students are making. And if, you know, if we want to know kind of progress that we're making, those data points should, like, if you're giving a student, you think they're making great progress. For me, I think the teaching, almost regardless of what the assessment is, and there are certainly some assessments that are biased and you can figure those out. But if you're doing some really good teaching, you can put some, some assessments in there. You should have a pretty good indicator of when your students are going to be, you shouldn't be with wild. So I, I think in some cases though, we may not be as accurate in the classroom grading. And just being efficient about the time that we have, I remember learning that lesson the hard way as a high school teacher, assigning, you know, papers for all my five classes, one hundred and twenty-five papers that have been at the grades. Like, how long is that going to take? Hundred and twenty-five times five minutes if I'm doing just five minutes on paper? Like, that's a lot of time. And part of the grading is you have to get that feedback back to students pretty quickly. You can't take two weeks. Because that's a long time from when we were having discussions. So I think for me, part of that assessment conversation is also about classroom, classroom-based grading.
And, and would you suggest then that classroom grading might be subject to world rather than the standard?
Uh, I think the standard shows, I think if you're going with the standard base, you're showing that both of the students have.
Well, but if you have a kid that comes in two days behind, by the time report card comes out, has come up to one grade. They don't get a A, but the one that's been at grade level and continues to creep along grade level gets a A.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's, again, like showing that growth progress, you definitely want to show that, reward that, build that momentum for students. We were talking about this earlier today as well, that, you know, part of the social, emotional and mental health of students is having some success in the classroom. They feel defeated in the classroom. That is, you know, we can, we can put in a lot of other supports, but that academic defeat has
So God, it's like, how do we mark that on their
On both, on both ways. Yeah, yeah. And then I think that's worth the conversation about what's the best way to let that one, but yeah, versus just saying, oh, you're so far away from the team that that can just seem very daunting for students who feels already.
Well, we want to get credit for the work that they do.
Right.
And if someone doesn't like to work very hard, let's say, hey, you know, do they get the same kind of credit? First question, I was one of those blockers that can stay ahead, you know? I don't know.
That also, that also gets to, that also gets to trying to meet the needs of our students. So if they're there, I, as your teacher, still want to be responsible for helping you grow. You're, you're at standard grade. I need to help you get even harder than that. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. The other part of that too is, we love thinking about math scores and math good news. Said a lot of times, I've talked to like high school students over the years and and ask them, I mean, usually math is one of the problems is there a problem for a lot of students? You know, why they, and they all go back to something in elementary school that they got in their head that they weren't good at math. And once you shoot that in their head, you know, it's game over. And I think they're, like, this year, I think our high school math teacher who's teaching one of the, you know, early algebra courses, and he said, one of the biggest thing you have to do is convince the students that, yes, you can do that. Because they've got it in their brain somewhere, you know? And so that's why I think it's really important, particularly at elementary, you know, to monitor that like math, you know, how things are going at that level. And, and it, it also gets to the tricky question of you know, standards based progress because, you know, are we just passing kids along even though they didn't get something? And then never giving them the opportunity to get it. Because we know students move at different levels or different rates and, you know, there's all kinds of, I mean, things going on in their lives that they may not, you know, this, this day when you're in a long division or whatever, they were thinking about something unknown or whatever. And so, you know, there's, there's that whole issue that floats into this as well. And so we need to really make sure that, you know, that, like, I often wish that we could, you know, survey the students and ask, you know, do you feel like you're good at math or bad at math? I mean, that, that measure alone tells me a lot about what's going on in their brains. And if we get too many students that think they're bad at math, then, you know, something's going on in an instructional model that isn't working.
Yeah, unless you set the bar really low, which I at least did, not really bad math. So if they actually look good, that's real success.
There is, I mean, there's research, I mean, this is older research, but like the researcher, Clark Steele, has done a lot of research around expectations, students and teachers have. So, you know, he's got a great study where he talked about a professor telling students, oh, students like you do really well on this math session. And they do well and telling other students, you know, students like you don't do so well. And even if they were straight to students, they did less because of the expectation that was there. So I think having, you're correct in that, you know, having those expectations about, yeah, you can do this, you know? But it's, it's scaffolding it in a way that doesn't just kind of throw them into the deep end and say, you can do it with setting an expectation with kind of help, have enough plan to help them get to where that is. So it may take most more steps together.
So going back to the kind of data causing harm. This year, one of the things that we're going to consider is once we do our assessment, we're going to sit on and talk to them as well what this number means and what you can do to get to the next number. So that they understand, oh, I got that. Nobody is born knowing this information, but if I do this, this, and this, then I can increase my knowledge. I think without that, just having a number makes you scared, like, and not knowing what to do to move that number, you feel powerless. And so how can we be facilitators out there learning to say, okay, you got this number? And so now, let's have a conversation. And what are some of the things that you think you can do to move you off? So are you doing in services with the, with the staff then to get their mindset around that also? So
Because you can't do every student.
The principals have been empowered to do, okay, to have those conversations with the staff. And looking at some of our information, they've at least started the assessment today with the first A we got. And so now the conversations will happen after. Yeah. So this is your number. Okay. So what do you need to do to get to the next?
Yeah, that gets back to, so how do we use assessments on a day-to-day basis to inform the instruction and all that? And so it was interesting, you were already talking. So I listened to Chris Rayco talk the issue about what the problem has with this back. And he was talking about exactly that issue of, well, S back doesn't tell students or parents or parent anything about, you know, what to do. It just gives you, you're, you're a number, one, whatever. And so, and it wasn't really designed to do that, but I think it's on us at districts to, to, you know, figure out how to do that extra.
Yes, if you go, you can drill deep down, it will tell you what you need to do to remove the student. But we have to share that.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think another thing that's kind of funny to put to mind for me and Derek Larson, who had spoke north of it, you know, a student in town, struggling with long division that day, maybe it's not, they didn't, because they're heading somewhere else. I wonder if there's ways that we can kind of see data side by side, to see like the academic assessment data as well as the CTE data that shows kind of that kind of like how young people are feeling about the space that they're in and what kind of correlation connection that may be bringing to the score in, in that assessment. I think it'd be really interesting to see from the side by side.
And I think you bring up an excellent point in that if that happens one time, then we can say, you know what, something else is going on. If that happens multiple times, then we need to look at some additional things. And we should have those early indicators using the E-bits in terms of, okay, this is the second time that this student did not do well in assessment. What do we need to do differently? Or, you know what, that was just a one-off. There's something else that could be going on in that space.
So I have another question about when we approach these things. Usually we've kind of approached them, maybe are totally biased on this, but kind of approached them as places where the staff brought us how they do this and we check it off saying, oh, aren't you wonderful? And you are. But we don't get into the creativity. And I'm wondering if, if we could, I would take more responsibility to read up ahead of time. What are the creative ways that things are being done, whether in teaching math or, you know, whatever the things are? And kind of prepared to have more of an in-depth conversation about how we might address these. Because sometimes it feels like we're kind of stuck in the way you've always done it. And we don't have a lot of space for creativity. And if we don't have a lot of space for creativity at this level, we can guess that there's not a lot of space at the other levels. So I, I don't know. Anybody have any thoughts about that? Did I just heard anybody's feelings? Cause like, didn't you?
Yeah, I didn't. Go ahead.
Can I just go back? Can I, can can I just go back to something that was sad? Hello? About children not succeeding, you know, a couple of days in a row on something. And this is where our interventions fail us because it seems like we wait till, for a long time before we Till, for a long time before we implement an intervention. And how can we remedy that so that interventions happen when a child starts struggling?
We were talking about, um, early indicators, um, and how we get that information. After just two versus four, five, six weeks, um, and starting intervention right then. Uh, because we also want to make sure that we give students space to say, okay, well, if you're not familiar with what this is. The task is or how I'm supposed to do it. Uh, okay, so that might be your one-up. Then if you have it again, if you do not, if you're not successful a second time. Then we need to start looking at what type of services or interventions might you need, especially with the high school. We don't want you to get all the way through the course and then need credit recovery. Um, and then at the elementary, we're looking at making sure that our NCSS is. Done with the doubt.
Thank you.
When it comes down to resources, um, we gotta have enough resources. Comes down to resources, but also understanding how to differentiate. Because even as we sit in here, all of us listen, learn, take things in different. And so just being able to differentiate and knowing our learners will help. And at the end of the day, research tells us that the most experienced person should be working with the student who needs the most support. And that's not what we do.
And are we going to change that? Are we gonna, are we gonna change that?
Yes, that's the goal. That's been said, but that's the goal, have to be. And have to believe it. Yeah.
Thank you.
I've been stuck on this question. Um, one of the kiddos from my property is going to school now for all the days. And at the middle, uh, at the end of last week, she just erupted. Because no one had spoken to her in her language the whole week and she was, she was not coming back. She said, they don't understand me. I don't understand them. I don't, I'm not coming back. Well, I, to me, and why I said resources, it was like. There aren't enough resources to have someone who speaks every language in every classroom. So. How do we get services for that kiddo to feel like someone is speaking to her? When nothing in the room makes sense to her. You know, and so, uh, we actually did find a, another person in the building. That is going in a couple of times a day and just saying, how are you going, how you doing? Do you know what's going on? Did you figure this out? And of course, she's gonna pick up, change which, but, um, she went back to school happy today. And it's just for resources. I just don't know how we get enough.
Somebody acting to see. Thank you for sharing that story.
Yeah, I researched, I, you know, it's reviewing, so they just released all the, um, best backstories from last year, um, on OSBI. And I was going through and looking and, you know, there's, when you look at the test, I mean, we had the lowest scores in the area, but. It's always true that, um, you know, there's a direct correlation between income level and, and test score. And it's always a trick. And we're in a state where the funding allocation system is basically everybody gets the same. It's a very regressive system. So, part of it is that, you know, having said that, that doesn't mean we give up. You know, because, I mean, there's little things that, I mean, what you, what happened didn't really cost anything. And so there's, there's, you know, we always need to work, you know, with the best we can with what we have at the same time. Legislature at the same time, so.
Yeah, for sure.
I wondered what you had before, uh, Jen, I think, uh, I, I would like that idea. Um, and also, we wonder if that's an opportunity to, to, um. Even if creativity may not be kind of the norm, I am certain there are amazing, sadly, the group of good things in our districts. And we don't even know about them, right? I think this kind of goes back to, um, what we talked about some about how we can. How are we really highlighting our successes and the really amazing things that we're doing in the district, right? We talk so much about test scores, that's why it's so low. It's terrible or whatever, but like, let's have all those good things. So using this as an opportunity, like, let's bring someone in and say, here's something I'm doing that's awesome. And, and then I think that's where we take our knowledge and say, great, now how can we teach those skills to other folks across our district? So that it isn't just this one teacher doing this one-off thing, right? It's shared knowledge, um, and, um, yeah. So it's, I see that as a way to, to both highlight and really shine the things that we do that we are doing well. And then also spreading knowledge. Yeah.
And whenever I, I mean, I will say, I'll talk about these later, but whenever I go look at, um, test score data. I always find something good. And for example, I can tell you, looking at ours, there is some phenomenal things that went on in fifth grade. That came to you and, and took a little bit of tree. So, you know, but like you say, part of it is, okay, what's going on there? And then there's some places where it wasn't going so well. And then how do we move the good stuff around and. Understand that, that requires, you know, some depth of analysis because there could be a lot of things. I mean, I don't even know what all those things are that they did, but. You know, it, it just requires, I mean, whenever I look at the data, I, I always come out with some, some really good things and some not so good things. It always, always the case. And so.
And there's always that competition of when you look one teacher up who's doing something well and then other teachers feel like. You know, there's, there is a competition, kind of. We started to felt that before, that if we don't recognize everybody for everything, then we were feeling that. I don't know how to get around that, uh, as much, but.
So, part, for, for one thing also, I'm much more interested in recognizing teams rather than individuals.
Yeah.
So the fifth grade team that, you know, because what I observed over the years is that when you get a good team, at a grade level or a subject level, whatever. When those people start working well together, good things happen, you know, however that is. I mean, it almost even doesn't matter sometimes. You know, there's, I mean, instructional includes, you know, teachers' work and the curriculum and all these things, but. It's amazing what happens when people just work together, even if they maybe don't have the best grade, you know, good things will happen, so.
I, I think too, when we look at teams. When we look at teams, we have to remember what, what happened in the year prior to that. You know, it's not, they had something to build on. If the fifth grade team is doing remarkable things, did they have something to build on? Because of something the fourth grade team had done.
So question about state reports. Are these, um, and, and, and no, Dirk Larson, you named a few, but are these, are there any more required ones? That are not listed here?
I think there are some, that's what, uh, we've, I think we're trying to go through. All the policies about any additional reports that need to be done. I don't think those are listed on there. So I think we need to go through that. And then anything updated from OSBI, any new state things that are required, that we put on there. So. So that I have each of the departments taking a look at required reports that we have.
Yeah, that would be good to do because this is just kind of data related. I know, for example, we have a policy, I think, related to reporting on. The sexual harassment, addiction and bullying thing, which I don't think we've ever done. And it's not strictly. The, the wording of the policy, I don't think is strictly just data related, you know, like number of incidents, whatever, but also, you know, what's. What's in place to support that and all that kind of stuff. So that, yeah, that would be good to.
So I think that's in the fall. Yeah, those are the, the updates from the state and then anything we have policy. I know we've started.
Yes, we have a lot.
Yep. Yep. And those are, again, some of those are just reports. Some of them are not necessarily data, so they can just be reports, but. You know, if we want this list to be data, the data kind of data reports, let's do that. The other one is just making sure that we're getting any other reports that are in there that are, um. That I can coordinate on this, what kind of map, and all.
And so when we look at these, we're looking at both Saturdays and Tuesday nights?
It's really for the month, so it could be, it could be, this is where I'm trying to figure out, like, if this is. The topics in general are good, then I can figure out Saturday session or presentation or work session. You know, once we have this, then I can take those things and then take the reports, the data pieces, put those in there. And then try and correlate it also with the strategic plan and the smart goals that we have so that we can, you know, highlight that. So then. The strategic plan is, you know, to living, to living the thing that we do. We reference it frequently, we're talking about it. And it's not just like a, you know, find a report that we got on there, just check it out.
There's a couple of other, and some, I guess, I mean, so these are kind of work session oriented. We can get information just in the regular meetings and reports. So some of these maybe that are, I, I don't think we've, it's been a long time since we really had a report on. Abbott and, you know, that's something, you know, that we, this district has been involved in for quite a long time and. Um, at one point, we were gonna go all out of it, show Walter and then, I don't know what happened to that. So. Um, it's one that is interesting because a long time ago, when I first started, there was a recommendation from the staff to, to kill the program. But the chief of students came in and said, no, don't do that. And some, some staff members said, no, don't do that. So we kept it. Then. It's, it's one that I've heard students rave about a lot over the years. Um, and so, anyway, I just. I'm kind of interested in where, you know, how that fits in particularly from like a teaching learning perspective, you know, or we. Or we, I mean, right now, it's kind of a nice, a, a program that Rose runs at Showalter and. And, uh, fosters, are we gonna, should we expand it? You know, what's the deal with, and that could be, I guess, a recorded, a regular meeting and work session. Um, and the other one is, um, the special education, I guess, I don't know, do you consider that a just kind of a. An area that we could report on?
I, I think special education involves a couple of different areas. I mean.
Right.
There's equity work within special education, there's, um, you know, instruction, there's, there's a lot of aspects of that. That I think are important in special education. Obviously, financial component to it.
Right.
And, uh, I think some of the parts are, for me at least, my experiences in some. Other areas are just kind of, if there's, if we're getting demand for a certain kind of product. If the student needs are kind of shifting. Uh, for instance, you know, if there was a very large deaf and hard hearing component that. You know, all of a sudden we had a bunch of families that were moving to the pandemic. So any experience like that would be good to know about. There'll be, and, and obviously any changes in qualifications to special education would be good too, so. Um, which I've never lost a lot of updates on that.
So whether that's for the work session or whether that's, you know, reports from time to time, I guess you can.
Yeah, I can certainly talk with Ms. Jones and Dr. Borshad and figure out kind of how we see that either in these items or if there's a. If it's a, if it's its own topic.
Another area that's, um, like to see, so we have these. Uh, Hope Team that's been under our collective bargaining agreement for some time and it'd be nice to hear what. I mean, under the collective bargaining agreement, they have some specific deliverables they're supposed to come up with, um, that we've never seen them, so. Because it, it, it kind of, it's interesting, it ties, when we start talking about, you know, the project that. Uh, director, the task force, the director who was going, um. All these things are under the broad umbrella of positive learning environment. And I, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're not. You know, the, the Hope Team, as I understand it, is, it's kind of focused on discipline issues. Whereas the other team is focused on rap, sexually harassment and intimidation and, yeah, there's a little overlap there. I don't. You know, I just want to make sure that we're not, um, that we kind of are keeping an eye on the whole big picture. And if they could be perfectly valid, separate tasks, but, um, just kind of curious about how we're approaching that. And it, which ties into, you know, I asked for one of the, the care teams, so. You know, what, and what I'm interested in there, you know, what kind of patterns are they seeing? You know, these are the teams that work with. You know, students that are, um, struggling in one way or another, and they, I guess, elevated in the, in the. I don't know, the tier, um, aspect to it. Yeah. And so. Yeah, what I'm really from, from our perspective, I'm really interested in what are the patterns that may impact budget. I mean, if there's certain patterns that are coming out, students, we can see a lot of students with this issue. Okay, then how do we, you know, design? It kind of gets back to the special ed, you know, you see patterns and we need, might need to shift some resources and whatever, so. Let's see, you've got CTE, that's the other one that, I don't know if that, that may be worthy of one on its own, just because of the amount of expansion that's going on. In CTE, I'm always interested this year, what, you know, as we expand the course level and that, because that has. That's nice because that's, you know, increases our budget, you know, more money comes in and. Uh, make use of our nice new states up there and so, um, interested to see. You know, what students are, are, are gravitating to, you know, that kind of stuff. Because that kind of bad budget information.
Yeah, so kind of, I let know the, the budget piece, um, I think this has come up before in some of the conversations. But I think it would be really valuable to kind of attach to each of these reports or the workshops, like a, a, a bit understanding of like. How money is being spent, like, as it relates to the different items, so that really can help us, like, actually support the financial oversight that we're in both have. Um, and so that it's not just like a budget report that comes once a month, that we have to figure out where all the connections are. Um, directly connected to this thing that we're hearing about, um, and here's the money that's out of the team. So a budget component actually can be, will be really useful. Um, and then I think something, uh, and I'm not really sure what other. Specific buckets, like this would be, um, I, I want this around, but. Um, Dirk Larson spoke to like, you did like really seeing like the full picture around the work that's happening. And I think there's a lot of. I know for me particularly, maybe it's just, you know, so, you know, learning is not so difficult, there's still a lot like, there's. Just a lot of things happening in silos, individual schools that maybe could really be, could really be, uh, supported. Uh, you know, more, more collectively and holistically. And, and also like. If, if we've got things happening in silence, I think resources are being stretched in a way that they probably shouldn't be. Um, so how are we gonna consolidate resources, consolidate efforts to really make sure that every student in our district is getting the same types of supports? Um, same kinds of interventions. So again, I don't know what topic that would be, it'd probably be multiple things, but, you know, really trying to get a full understanding of like. What are all the things we're doing in this area, how, at each school, how do they all fit together and how are they supported by the district? Team here. Um, yeah, so I can think about it a little bit, of one of those specific things, but. I know there's a lot more connection, but. I mean, it's just a kind of random thing, but I would really love it if a roadmap project thing were sooner. Um, that goes a very long time away, a whole year, um, to really understand. That, so I, I don't know if that can be moved up somehow, but it just goes really far.
Yeah, it's, it's much less a project now, it's just kind of a region. Roadmap region, unless you're talking about the initial roadmap project that started like fifteen years ago.
Uh, I mean, I think the intent of that, when we added it here, was just kind of getting an understanding of how. I think, how and in what ways are we aligned with the other districts that are a part of the roadmap? Um, and then, you know, how are we really getting the relationships? How are we? Yes, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, why don't, I can, um, so on. This, I can, why don't I move that up to? January.
Yeah, I think the, the, in the last year or so, the, the whole focus of that thing has changed.
Yeah.
It's much different from when it was started. So just having preferably if they're executive director or whatever, could just come in and say, you know, what her vision for the, what she's trying to do and where she's trying to take the organization, because I haven't heard that.
For which organization?
The roadmap.
Oh.
CCR.
Yeah, CCR.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that may be actually the better name for this, Community Center for Education Results.
Yeah.
That's their formal organizational name.
Yeah.
They were originally set up to implement this roadmap project, which originally was basically to get federal dollars.
Because that NCLB.
Yeah, federal dollar. And so we got a, a big grant, regional grant for that. And that's what it originally got, but that's, that grant has come and gone and is, you know, is now kind of changed focus in ways that I'm not quite sure.
CCR has definitely changed a lot.
Yeah, so executive director and CCR.
Yeah. So I could be, we can move that up to January.
Okay.
Yeah.
Speaking of grants, I think that's another one that I would love a work session around. I know we get the quarterly grant report, which is some insight about money's being spent. So I think kind of going back to what I mentioned before about like how money is being spent, particularly in relation to grants. So I'd love some more like insight on status of grants, really what are the objectives of grants aside from the financial piece? Like, what are, you know, and even go like, how is this grant serving our district as a whole versus maybe just serving the fun school? How can we first get up though, just more information on the grants that we are getting and how we are doing as far as like implementing those grants and the, the, whatever the words, I can't think of them. Implementing those grants with fidelity.
Well, there are reports that have to go out to the grantors, right? To the foundation. And I don't know what those reports are like, and I don't know if Ronan does those reports or depending on what kind of grant they are.
Depends, yeah, on the department and the brand.
But it might be interesting just to see some of those reports, the random sampling of those reports, because that would be helpful.
But most of what we call grants on the grant report are just dollars from the state and federal government. And so I don't even call them grants, but.
But do they have record reporting requirements?
Yeah, a year in, some of them have year in reporting, some of them have long current applications that have integrated information prior to submitting and getting approval. So the ones like, there's a large home state usually have year in compliance.
I mean, we're talking about high grants, stuff that you put through the high grant system, which is basically just says, do you qualify?
Some of them are long.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. Yeah, you guys know that, but so it's a mixed bag.
I think we were particularly hopeful, I know there was some, you know, conversation that kind of happened at the beginning or the end of last school year around the Gates Grant, for instance. And some rumors that were happening about maybe they lost the grant funding, maybe it just ended and a lot of confusion around that. So I think, and I didn't really know, but that seems odd that we wouldn't know kind of the nuances of, of that stream of money coming in, why it stopped coming in, all of those things. So even simple reports like that about here's the how and the why on where, you know, here's where this funding ends, you know, all those sorts of things.
Got a bunch of notes. No, I mean, that's, that's the whole point of this was to kind of fine tune it a little bit. So what I can do is work on this and then send it back out to the whole board just so you can see it again. We'll see about trying to see where a couple of these additions are and kind of where they fit.
Yeah, some of these, I mean, I think I, you know, I like all the ones you have here. I mean, some of these could be potentially like food services could be in report.
True.
You know, if you need some more room for some of the other newer ones.
Well, the, the goal now is to take all these, identify which ones are, would be like a Saturday session, which one would be a work session, which one might be a presentation, which one is just a report, a questions on report, whatever that would be. So it's taking all these and trying to put a new shape, adding these other particular ones that we have.
Would you be interested in, if we knew that the food service of one was going to come up in two weeks, would you want to ask us what we're expecting in that conversation? So that then you could, you know, are we talking about, I don't know, whatever it is? I, I think more on the, some of the other ones like arts, the arts one, maybe, maybe you would ask us, what are you looking for in this?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, especially if we're going to do an aesthetic session, like I want to make sure we're, you know, getting good information out there to have a, a good discussion in the study session for, for sure. And I've got this in here, you know, about making sure we bring in smart stakeholders, so our students are, now, in there.
Yeah.
Look at that as well.
Just a kind of a process question, is that something that comes back to us later to look at approval as an action item? Or is this kind of just more internal bad for us?
I don't think we had anything for approval. I think it was internal bad. I mean, if we want to prove it, we can, but I think, you know, just working on this, as long as we're kind of sticking with this and then it's just not more being. Yeah, that's, that's the thing always. But I think it should be fine.
You know, I think another thing kind of along with what you're saying, really interesting is not only getting information about what we might want for our course, but is there a way to like, to look at feedback from the community about like what they want to be hearing and seeing about these things? And or just getting some, kind of even some feedback or survey about like their perception of how a particular thing is going and kind of including that as a report, so it's not just kind of staff and maybe a student feelings, but also community, parents, things like that, that would be possible.
Well, I think what we'll try and do is in these, in this information that we have, again, this is another piece that we're trying to make sure that's included in the reports or any information that we have. So as I've been talking with staff about information that's coming up, like make sure that our student voice in there or, you know, adult voices, people come home, staff voices, so that's what we're trying to get in more.
If it's scheduled out far, though, that's something that Karen could put in the newsletters, so in school, it's going to be talked about these days next month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's typically in our work session, I think everybody has this idea that, you know, they shouldn't come or something. Secret work session or something. And so a little, yeah, invitation to folks to come to a work session. I mean, the students, for example, I don't think they've ever come to a work session, so. And they may have good reason, I mean, you know.
That word work.
Yeah. Well, and they're, they're.
Yeah, exactly. But if they knew what the work session was about and they were interested in.
Yeah, and we'll make sure this.
All right, well, slide fifty-nine. So go ahead and if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. We got the motion.
Sure.
All right, we are officially adjourned. You gotta tell Ellen if I'm something I like.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh.
So that'll come up in one of the next meetings.
Hopefully at twenty-seven. Absolutely.